I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governed body. The city of Seward divides by the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is also posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Vulcan?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Cambrich?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Singleton?
Schmidt?
Here.
And?
The first item this evening is the consideration of approval of draft minutes of June seventh, twenty sixteen.
Salute.
The motion and a second is during a discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Mayor, Vulcan Beck, and Fritz Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, and Hans Moschek.
Item number two, consideration of consent agenda.
Salute.
Certainly.
The motion and a second is during a discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Mayor, Vulcan Beck, and Fritz Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, and Hans Moschek.
Item number three, presentation by Blue Stem Fiber. Greg Dynick is here. Welcome, please, uh, keep. Push the podium. Is it your name and address?
Name me, Mr. Mayor. My name is Greg Dynick. The last name is spelled D-Y-N-E-K. My address is eighty-two thirty-five Dundee Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska. This is my, uh, business partner, Aaron Wirick, who, uh, is taking part. And I found the edge of the precipice there. Mr. Mayor, City Administrator, ladies and gentlemen, the Senate Council, appreciate this opportunity tonight and the invitation to speak with you about Blue Stem Fiber and our plans to substantially increase the speed, value, and access to broadband for this, uh, citizens of the city of Seward. Blue Stem Fiber was created by like-minded Nebraskans who saw a need throughout the state for faster broadband connectivity and more affordable price delivered via fiber to the home and workplace. My partner, Aaron Wirick, had spent the better part of twenty years building fiber networks and level through communications in Colorado and Nebraska, Lincoln State before establishing his own firm, uh, delivering, uh, wireless internet service uh, to businesses and residences around eastern Nebraska. And approached me several years ago, um, as he had already recognized the challenge of delivering an ever larger amount of data to his customers, higher rate of speed, and it, uh, and was reaching his network capacity. I also recognized the need, uh, for better broadband but came at it from a different standpoint. My wife is a teacher at a Todd One school and, uh, several years ago invited, uh, a couple of her students to join my son's soccer team, which they all had the misfortune of having coached by me. We, uh, had boys who approached the team and joined it who had, uh, little economic, uh, support, weren't able to make it to, to practices or games without the benefit of getting a ride. But I was surprised to see that each of them, uh, almost invariably asked the first question, hey, Coach, can you light up a hotspot in the car? They had access to wireless devices, they had access, uh, to wireless internet-enabled devices, but oftentimes they didn't have access to that, to that connectivity at home. And so that hotspot was an opportunity for them to get homework done, was an opportunity for them to interact with their peers, just like every fourteen-year-old boy and girl does. And it was an opportunity for them to pursue entertainment. The need for access, um, for every student, uh, has become only more important as schools are bringing collaborative computing technologies like Google Chromebooks, Google Documents to the, uh, to the school and making it a part of the curriculum. And, uh, our company, Blue Stem Fiber, was established to, um, to deliver fiber to all, um, citizens in the community and to do so in a way that, um, that makes it more cost-affordable. Blue Stem Fiber has a key, um, business relationship with Corning Fiber Optics. Company formed a hundred and fifty years ago in Corning, New York. Most of you know Corning because you use Corning glass in the kitchen or you've had Corning fiberglass, Owens Corning, that you put into your, uh, into your attic. You're obviously familiar with, uh, Corning from the monster glass that goes into your phones, but, uh, their primary innovation that I think, has been most compelling is the internet that, uh, internet-enabled, uh, fiber optic cable that is driving, uh, all of our web access. Like all innovation, you develop an innovation, you patent it, and then you're copied. What is, I think, of interest is Corning looked at that and said, how can we build a better way to do this? How can we build a way that enables people to deliver faster broadband connectivity to their community? When you build a custom fiber optic, um, plant up to the home, it's more or less like building a custom plumbing project where you build glass, you know, glass connectivity out and you sweat the pipes all the way there. So instead of cutting fiber, resplicing it together to connect it to the home, this product here, the Corning's FlexNAP product, um, which Aaron just connected, I must have bumped it. It was designed to enable businesses and communities to deliver, um, to deliver fiber. Is there a timer that I can see, Mr. Mayor?
A what?
Is there a timer I can see, Mr. Mayor? I want to make sure I'm...
Oh, you're fine.
Okay.
You're presenting, so we don't hold you to the five minutes.
Okay.
But we'll let you know if it's too long.
I was asking Bonnie if the air was on.
Yeah.
I wasn't going like this to you.
Okay, okay, very well. If, if I see the, uh, gavel flying this way, then I should know.
You'll know. You won't have to ask.
I, I appreciate that.
You'll know, yeah.
The FlexNAP product was delivered as a speed-to-market product to enable communities, to enable companies to deliver fiber in a significantly faster manner. If you think about it from the standpoint of a competitive advantage, if you're going out to build a fiber optic project and it takes you five to ten years to build it within a community and you're competing with others, that's like saying, I'm gonna throw a punch at my opponent in the ring and it's gonna take forty-five minutes for that to come around, that roundhouse to hit my opponent, they'll be able to duck and weave. We live in an environment where we're competing, uh, for jobs, we're competing for people. We want to see those projects done in a, in a much quicker manner. The FlexNAP product allows us to be able to go out, uh, whether building overhead or underground, and pass significantly faster homes at a significantly lower price, which enables us to deliver significantly better prices in the end to the customer. Why Seward? Seward is a city with a clear identity. It's an educated, educated population. It's a university town. It's a county seat. It's Fourth Ele- Fourth of July capital of the nation. It has a natural inclination towards connectivity because of its connection via, uh, the roadways that run through here, Highway thirty-four and the interstate, as well as the north-south connection. But more clearly, and the reason we, we have come before you tonight, is because we think Seward is a city that has made a habit of reinvesting in itself. It's a city that set out and said, we need to have access, um, to better, um, entertainment options and built, and built increased, uh, an increased pool. It's a city that said, we need to improve our educational infrastructure and ran a school bond that was approved. All of those actions are done to attract, uh, and retain families and to attract young people that, to build a community. What I'm presenting to you is the, um, is the single most important technology infrastructure for cities to attract students, to attract young people, to attract people that are building the tech-heavy asset-like businesses that are part of being on the Silicon Prairie. There are incredible economic benefits for, uh, cities that have built fiber-to-the-home projects. On balance nationwide, four to five percent bumps were seen in housing values versus comparable cities that don't have it. You can see how that would are down back to increases in your, in your budget off of property taxes. As I mentioned, it's a key technology that, uh, that is used for building connectivity to the world, which is the platform that allows people to build boulu boxes or fire springs or, um, or hay needles or Googles or the like. It's the, uh, technology that I think is sort of akin to being on the railroad system in the eighteen hundreds or being on the interstate in the mid nineteen hundreds. It was a defining ter- a defining characteristic, a defining, um, uh, technology that allows cities to succeed and improve and attract people. For people fifteen to thirty-four years old, the highest use in ESPN Network, the most sought-after network in entertainment venue is YouTube. That means that you or your kids, uh, or your grandkids are watching that more than HBO, more than MTV, more than ESPN, which is frankly astounding. If you think about it from a production standpoint, that's dependent on people being able to download information, um, video, data-intensive information. Just as importantly, it's, it's contingent on people being able to upload information. Having a high-speed, uh, easily accessible, symmetrical connection that allows people to upload information quickly is basically the megaphone that allows people to broadcast their ideas, to broadcast their business, to broadcast their services to the world. It's what young families are looking for because they want access to those education, uh, opportunities for their kids. They want access to engage on a civic basis, to learn about community, uh, activities, as well as to engage with services that you provide. It provides an opportunity for a remote workplace connectivity, whether it be people working late or people being able to stay home when weather is, uh, inclement. And entertainment-wise, nobody likes to buffer when they're trying to download their most, their, uh, most desired series that they're waiting for. I mentioned to you earlier the relationship with Corning. We struck a strategic partnership with Corning, uh, in a master purchase agreement that enables us, uh, to have access to this, uh, FlexNAP, um, connectivity and be able to build fiber to the home in a much more, um, expeditious manner than any company that's going to come in front of you, uh, to deliver to the home. Our master purchase agreement guarantees us access, um, to fiber and to equipment to be able to build within four to six weeks of anything we order. That by comparison, the average firm out there is placing orders and has been since February for two thousand seventeen's delivery. That would be important enough, but from a shovel-ready standpoint, we have been working within the community for the last several months. We have engineered the first two thousand homes. We have fiber on the ground and are ready to build. Our services are, uh, designed to be attractive to all, uh, residents with a hundred-by-a-hundred circuit offered to residential, uh, customers at fifty dollars a month. Put another way, that allows you to download five, four K videos, uh, at the same time. And we're offering a gig service at seventy-five dollars a month. We're doing this to, um, to provide, uh, access to build, um, to build community and to help Seward highlight, uh, the quality of life, um, that you become famous for. I'd open it up to any questions.
Just so the council's aware, I'll, um, they're not asking for anything from, from the city or from the council. The purpose of this is that you, you have heard previously from, uh, from Great Plains Communications with their fiber project downtown. And we, we just thought it was important to have them, uh, present, to have Blue Stem present to you as well so that as they move forward with their plan, if you get questions about what's going on, since this would be, um, in the residential area as well, um, you are aware of, of what's going on, and this is an opportunity to ask any questions about their timeline or, 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 anticipate any questions you might think you will be getting, uh, as, as they move forward. So that was the purpose of the presentation this evening. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Yes.
Just for your, for, are there any issues with, like, franchise agreements with, like, Time Warner or...
No.
Uh, Great Plains or anybody, and so that A, and then B, is everybody paying their fees? That, like, digging in our right-of-ways and everything like that? Because I know we did establish something like that, and I know there's, I've seen a lot of, like, you know, the, the tunnel bore, uh, uh, yeah.
Okay.
The boring machines going around. So I'm assuming everybody's paying their fees, right?
John can help me with this too, but, um, first of all, there's no exclusive franchises. So Great Plains is in here on their own, but the way we're set up is if you're just doing internet-only, there is no franchise. And as such, there's no franchise fees or occupation taxes. The occupation taxes are on, um, cell phones, TV, cable TV, and regular landlines. So that's what the occupation taxes are, and gas.
So if they're going to offer programming, then that moves you into the franchise, which, um, you require them to have basically the same franchise agreement that we would have already with Time Warner. And, and there have been, now, those, those conversations have been coming up, um, but at this time, there is no proposed franchise agreement because I don't believe you're proposing programming at this time. Okay.
Kelly, you know, if I say something wrong, you know, but, so what we'd have with them is, is they wanna, most of their fiber, they wanna hang on the pole. And so we would have a pole agreement, a pole attachment agreement with them. And right now, we're working on a new one. The one that we have is from about nineteen eighty-two with Time Warner, and it's about this thick. We got a pole attachment agreement from LES to look at what they do, as well as what MPPD does. And so I'll be going through that. Larry's looked at the LES one, Larry Ruther, our electric superintendent, he doesn't see any problems with it, he thinks it's fine. It's, you know, like, five pages long. I sent it to Kelly, I don't know if he had a chance to look at it, but, you know, we want to make it easy, but we also make sure that, uh, we're protected by it.
And the, and the, the, and the, the, the fee for, for boring or...
Right.
Hanging it is the same?
You guys set those, and it's based on a dollar twenty-five a foot, whether it's hung or whether it's bored. We are collecting those, um, but the agreement with the gas company is, is we do not collect a fee from them, but everybody else we collect from. So we are collecting those, and believe me, we get a lot of bite back, but we're collecting those. But the pole agreement, basically, that's based on clearances. I mean, they can't hang it if we don't have the clearances. If we have too much stuff on the pole or the hang's gonna be too low, then they won't be able to do it, and they'll have to board.
And we don't own all the poles, as you're aware, so...
About sixty, forty.
Yeah.
So Windstream owns, former LTNT owns about forty percent of the poles in town. So that I know, I think, Greg, you're working with them right now on a agreement with them, so... So that'll be the next thing, is we'll put together a pole attachment agreement, and then that'll come back to the council after the attorney approves it and everything like that, and then we'll come back. So, okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Greg, what's your guys' reach? Because, like, I know with, uh, Great Plains and Time Warner, uh, where you guys are sit, it's difficult to get fiber out there. So I don't know, if you can explain that exactly.
Great Plains just plugged us into there.
Well, it's more of a, it's more of a, of a, of a ROI when it comes to the distance from their main line. So it isn't so much they can't do it, it's just a question of justifying that expense. I think that was kind of what happened, because it gets more, the farther you gotta go out, depending on the number of customers that are on that, on that line. But I think, I think they took care of that, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Uh, we, we anticipate building past every home, uh, within the city limits of, of Seward, uh, with access available to, any of those, as well as any businesses within the, within the city limits. Outside of the city limits, we would, uh, explore it on a ROI basis.
Yes, John.
I apologize if I missed it, but did you, did you say a speed, how fast?
Yeah, so our, our base speed is a hundred meg by a hundred meg.
Okay.
Which is, um, is fast. It would, it would allow you to basically download three or four movies simultaneously, um, while your kids uploaded, um, pictures from camp without crashing your, I mean, as a use case, um, as a use case that I've encountered at home. So we're offering a hundred by a hundred at fifty dollars a month, a gig at seventy-five dollars a month for residential customers.
Okay.
And to kind of put that in perspective, um, I have, I currently have Windstream as my internet provider, and I upgraded it to as fast as I could do for my neighborhood. And I believe it's twelve up and one down roughly, is what I'm getting.
Twelve down.
Or, yeah, you know. Thanks. That's why I keep you around, Chris. No, so that's, it just gives you a sense of scale, that's a big difference. And that's, and that's the best that they can do at this time, at least in my neighborhood. So, it was, this would be a, a considerable jump. Any other questions or comments?
Timeline, what's your timeline for...
So, once we, uh, we, we get established, we have, uh, as I mentioned, engineered, um, we're ready to go. We anticipate having, uh, more than half the city done in the first six to nine months and, uh, completion of the city over, uh, probably like twelve to twenty-four month timeframe.
Sorry, it is, what's that?
I just have another question.
Go ahead.
What other cities are you in right now? I mean, you, where's your business at?
So we are, uh, we are in, uh, Lincoln, building out into West Lincoln right now, um, uh, out towards, uh, Capital Beach. Um, we are also serving, uh, parts of Roga, uh, wirelessly right now with the, uh, project to build out that direction as well.
Yes.
Is Time Warner underground or underground? It's all of town?
They have, they have a little bit of both. That's it, you know, part of our town is, is poles and then part of it is underground. I mean, all the new areas are all underground now, so, you know, you can only do so much overhead and then you gotta go under.
And we don't have a problem going in either direction, uh, and all of our overhead is set up to be able to be taken underground should you have a, a, a change in your, uh, delivery system over time.
Yes.
I'm trying to think back on what you, you said, um, property values go up when this comes in?
Yeah, the, the...
And we pay more taxes, so if we're paying more taxes, does it wipe out the savings that you're dealing us on your rate?
Well, theoretically, you are not, um, I, I guess I would say, on balance, it, it, uh, it's statistically taken up home values, as I said, between four and five percent. I can't speak to what the, um, what the average price of a home is in Seward to be able to run that calculus in my head right now, if you can.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, and what's your levy rate on it?
Dollar seventy-five.
Dollar seventy-five. So thirty-five hundred, if you were to take it up, um, if you were to take it up five percent, you're talking, you know, like, a hundred and seventy-five, uh, dollars, um, a year. Our ser- our service versus the fastest that's available from the majority of your providers, so as not to identify any by name, um, uh, is typically in the ninety to a hundred dollar a month range. Maybe lower for their initial and then higher after that. The rates I've seen are seventy-dollar teaser rates for initial and then followed by a hundred and twenty dollars after you go off the initial rate. So that's, that's seventy dol- you know, potentially twenty to seventy dollars of savings, um, per month versus, uh, an incremental twelve dollars left tax rate.
And as you know, there are other fiber companies that we have talked to, and, um, so there will be, I anticipate, it's more activity than, than just Blue Stem here in the near future. So we just wanted to bring you up to speed on what those, those plans look like, and as others are prepared to present, we will have them come before you as well, if you haven't already. Any other, any other questions or comments?
I just have one. So with the install of fiber optic compared to top online and the cableized most residents have now, what's the impact or cost to the homeowner, uh, once they get fiber optic into their house? Does it run through modem and then through cable and Cat six to their equipment, or what's the cost gonna be to the homeowner to upgrade?
We are building fiber into the, into the house, and I might let Aaron speak to this. But we're building fiber into the house and providing a wireless router that will transmit at either a hundred or a one-gig circuit within that, the house as part of the installation, uh, as part of the, the monthly service. We're striving, um, to build a service that, and a value offering that is so compelling that it becomes a why-not. And realistically, that is the, the primary objection that people have is being done for additional service costs or needing to go out and do it. And from a service delivery standpoint, we want to be able to ensure that people get to speed they're paying for. And the best way to do that is to provide customer premises equipment that guarantees that.
That's about right. And a lot of it with your existing equipment, it works with the Cat five or Cat six. You have Cat three, we can transmit through your house, it just doesn't run at high speed. So we just replace where you're at, and we deliver to the same spot, so for the consumer, it's seamless for the most part.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We appreciate your time and we, uh, thank you for...
Thank you.
For seeing this evening, and we're, we're excited to have you part of the committee.
Appreciate it, Alfred. Thank you.
Okay. Item number four, presentation by cemetery board in consideration of amending the rules and regulations at the cemetery. So I think Roger Glouz is here to present. Welcome.
Thank you. This probably won't be quite as interesting as what, uh, you just heard, but, uh, I'm Roger Glouz. I'm, uh, the past chair of the, uh, cemetery board, and, uh, we are here tonight to, uh, present to you the rules and regulations that we have developed over a period of years for the various additions to the cemetery. This all started, uh, back in, uh, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, when we were, uh, starting to develop the veterans section, uh, of the cemetery and the rules and regulations for that, uh, parcel. And, uh, you, you have that, that part in your, in your packet. When we were doing this, uh, we had a lot of discussion, uh, and communication with other cemeteries, uh, other groups, and, and so on, to get, uh, the information, uh, that was needed in order to do the, do these rules and regulations. So after completing the regulation, the rules and regulations for the veterans sec- uh, section, uh, and speaking with, um, our employees, the city administrator, department heads, and so on, it's pointed out that there are a lot of, uh, differences between the various sections of cemeteries from, from the Seward Cemetery to Greenwood to Anderson. And, uh, and of course, there are a lot of additions to each, each cemetery. And, uh, they were all, uh, somewhat different in, in the rules. So, uh, our, uh, task at that point was to move ahead and, uh, try to get as much similarity to the various additions in the rules and regulations as possible. That did not mean that we were going to change anything on the, uh, headstones and, and so on that were located in those conditions from years past. They'll, they'll stay the same. But anything new from, uh, the time we adopted the rules and regulations will go according to these rules. So, uh, it was felt that once we had more, uh, continuity, uh, between the, or amongst the different sections and additions, uh, it would give a lot less, uh, confusion, uh, to staff and, and purchasers. So again, this took a lot of time to research and make the changes rather than understand them. And we probably burned out a few cemetery members, uh, in the cemetery board members during that time. Our current, uh, we are, we're our six members. We get appointed by, uh, the mayor and co by the council. Our current president is Rick Hedykott, our secretary is Pat Payne. We also have Greg Satka who's with us tonight, Ken Meyer who's with us, Claudia Wharton, and then myself. So what we're asking is, uh, that, uh, you look over, look over the, uh, regulations that you have before you and, uh, and give them, uh, your approval. Tonight, we'll be able to answer any questions that you might have. Again, uh, this is probably, uh, like reading a, uh, a caution book on something you're not that interested in, but it is very important that, that we have your approval. We can recommend, uh, as a cemetery board, uh, that, uh, we give your approval to, uh, to get these passed. And, uh, we very much would like to, uh... that we give your approval to, to get these passed. And we very much would like to get them passed so we can continue to work on the veterans cemetery to get that set up so that it can be used. Veterans from World War II are, were very quickly leaving this earth. And also many other veterans into the fifties and early sixties. So, I think it is important. And that's why we did the veterans section. And that's why the BFW Legion put a lot of effort into developing the memorial for the veterans section will be situated. So, I'm not going to go through each one of these because all of you can read. And, and probably not very, doesn't take very long to see similarities and some of the rare differences. So, at that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Roger?
And if I can't answer them, Greg or Ken.
I've been to some of their meetings and then Dan and Matt from the cemetery have been working on these with them to make sure that they understand what's going on. And I know they've worked with Jeff and the, and the veterans organizations at length, so.
Yes. You know, we have input from all people in the mentions. And so, have Jeff been on tonight to help us support the theories with anything that we need? Any questions?
If there's no questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion.
Introduce the motion.
Do you have a motion to amend the rules and regulations that the cemetery has proposed by cemetery board? Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please register the votes.
William Taylor, welcome back. Captain Strick, now the senior commissioner of the national transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm number five. Discussion of proposed wind turbines effect on Seward Airport. We have Greg Whistler here this evening to present. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Greg Whistler. My wife, Carrie, and I are the managers of Seward Airport. The airport is located at twelve fifty two hundred and eighty third. Thank you, Councilman. And Mr. Smith, Mayor, and Bonnie, we just wanted to bring to the attention the conflict and the potential dangers of putting a wind turbine within five miles of the airport. When a turbine, well, first of all, the airport was built over forty years ago in its current location. And it was, it was put there because there was few obstacles in the way. And what, what we don't vote with, with an airport is physical obstacles that prevent an airplane from coming into the airport or safely landing or approaching the airport. What this turbine will do is it will be less than five miles from the airport. It will be approximately a mile and a half north of the runway and, and four miles west of the, of the airport property. And it's gonna be, from what I understood from the developer, approximately four hundred and thirty feet tall. So, that will be the highest obstacle that is that close to the airport. Any other tower or structure is shorter or the taller ones are considerably further away. Five miles is not a very big distance. When an airplane comes into land, we typically refer to things or relate to things as we do with driving in our car. If we're driving down the highway at sixty miles an hour, we travel one mile in one minute. In an airplane, at a hundred and twenty miles an hour, we travel that same mile in thirty seconds. Most of us can hold our breath for twenty seconds. And if the airplane is flying in the hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty mile an hour range as it's coming into land, that means it travels one mile in twenty seconds. So, four miles off the, or four and a half miles off the end of the airport is not a very long time for sight and recognition of what's around. We have two primary ways that we fly with airplanes, with rules with the Federal Aviation Administration. One is VFR, visual flight rules. Those allow us to fly when the weather and the, and the minimum cloud ceiling, the bottom cloud is at least one thousand feet above the ground, then we have at least three miles visibility. At that point, there are numerous regulations that we follow, but we can fly just about whichever direction in a straight line that we want to fly. That's the advantage of flying, is a straight line travel. Once we get lower than that one thousand foot cloud height or three miles visibility, we have to fly under instrument flag rules. Those airplanes are equipped with additional equipment, additional equipment at the airport. And when we're flying and coming into the airport under instrument flag rules, we also have a predetermined instrument approach that is put together and established by the, the Federal Aviation Administration. And what that does is it allows the airplane to come in at various altitudes and descend low enough to land at the airport without hitting an obstacle. Most people think of an instrument approach where you pick an imaginary point five or six miles from the airport and you land in a continuous slope down to the runway. That's not the case. Most instrument approaches are written in, with more than one step. So, our instrument approaches start six to nine miles away from the, from the airport. We can descend down to a certain altitude based on the obstacles that are around the area. And we fly at that altitude for three to five miles until we're a little closer to the airport. And then we descend again depending on the, on the obstacles to get low enough to be able to see the runway environment and the lane. If there's obstacles within the area, the FAA raises the minimums and we can't come down as low. And what that does is it basically shuts off the use of the airport when clouds are at a certain height. It doesn't mean bad weather. It doesn't necessarily mean snow, rain, fog. It just means when the cloud height is lower than what, what the regulations require or what the minimums are. What that does is that prevents any airplane that wants to come into land from physically landing due to regulations. Those airplanes are generally business travelers. We get a lot of people traveling in from other parts of the country that stop at the airport for fuel, get food and stay the night or, or continue on. We just had a, a person in from California today. But it also means corporate airplanes that are flying in for servicing their satellite operations. Whether that be Concordia College, Tenneco. We get aircraft in for Tenneco all the time. It could be a future business that wants to expand in, in Seward, maybe the new industrial development. But if we have an obstacle that increases our instrument approach minimums, that basically reduces the use of the airport. And that's a forever thing. It, it won't change. Once an obstacle is built, it doesn't get removed. So, like I said, the airport was built many years ago to avoid those obstacles. And we want to make sure that we don't put something up that, that hampers the use or restricts the use if we can move that obstacle a little bit further. In our view, if we could move that tower a little bit more to the west, like I said, right now it's less than four point six miles. It's less than five miles approximately, four point seven miles from the airport. That's pretty close, like I said, in aviation flying. The Federal Aviation Administration evaluates these obstacles or these obstructions, they're called. But we're not able to get any information on that being the airport because we're not the sponsor of this particular project. So, we can't get any, any information prior to what's called a termination. That's when the FAA determines if this will be a hazard. And there's two hazards. One is a hazard to aerial navigation. And one then determines whether or not it affects the instrument approaches. Two separate entities, not necessarily coming from the same department. We, as an airport, cannot get any of that information because we are not the sponsor of the project. So, we have not, we only know what the, what the sponsor, BlueStem Energy is, as I've said. So, our concern is that the tower will be a little bit too close. If it was a little bit further west, at least one mile, maybe two miles, it would make things so much better, safer. Like I said, we, we just have to keep in mind that airplanes travel on a straight line. They approach the airport from all directions. It's not like an intersection where a vehicle will come in from, on the road. We can come in from all three hundred and sixty degrees and we never know where somebody's departing from or coming to. Another thing to keep in mind is we already have a row of towers west of the, of the airport. Starting south of Interstate eighty, we have a fifteen hundred foot tower that belongs to Channel ten. We have three more towers between Interstate eighty and Highway thirty-four. And then we have smaller towers north of Highway thirty-four. Again, this wind turbine is, as proposed, will be the tallest obstacle that's that close to the airport. Another thing, just from general information, we travel across the country a lot in our business, both flying and driving. And I have never seen one single wind turbine at any one location. And once the infrastructure is in place, once the, the networking and the, and the incorporation into the power system has taken place, more towers will come up. And if that's the case, I was not here for the previous presentation. So, have we heard if BlueStem only has one tower or more proposed? But like I said, I've never seen only one single wind turbine at any one location. Once the infrastructure is in place, there's generally more that gets built. And, and that just increases the, the number of obstacles that are, that are out there for us. We have approximately nine thousand operations, nine to ten thousand operations at the airport each year. That's one takeoff or one landing. So, we do stay pretty busy. We have a lot of traffic that comes into the airport that, that does business in Seward or that just simply stops by. It's not like the interstate where you, where you see everybody stop in at the, the same fuel station or gas station. People come in throughout all time periods. And a turbine that's, that's in place will be a twenty-four hour obstacle, whether it's sunny, dark, or good weather or bad weather. It's always there. I'd love to answer any questions that anybody has. I know sometimes flying is not as clear as driving. We're all used to getting up and, you know, three or four years old, driving in the car and knowing what that's like. Flying is a little bit different. We have many rules that we have to follow. But we also want to protect the airport and its usability from, from the standpoint of the, of the airport management. If we, if we don't protect the airspace around it, we forever limit our ability to draw in more activity, more businesses use airplanes to travel. And like I said, once a, once an obstacle is in place, it never comes down. It's, it's a permanent fixture. Yes, sir.
Glad to sit.
Comment and a question. My office window is on the north porch-
Oh, okay.
With the airport and, yeah, it seems like about once every hour, there's something coming or going. And I'm an aviation geek, so I would get away from my computer and look. One question I have, have you went before the county commissioners at all? Do you know what, what their view is as far as, like, have you expressed your concerns to them? Because I think this turbine is gonna happen in county space, right?
That is my next step.
Outside of our, our jurisdiction. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
That is my next step. I-
So, you haven't talked to-
I have not at this time.
Okay. And then my other question is, I know you, you can't hear directly from the FAA-
Correct.
Regarding this, but in your opinion, what would they, what would, what do you think they would say as far as move it? You said, what, like another mile or two?
If we could go one or two miles, I think we would eliminate-
More to the west?
Yes, to the west.
Okay.
I think that would eliminate all of the obstructions. Like I said, within five miles, that's, that's a pretty tight distance when you're traveling at a hundred and twenty miles an hour. That, that's where we're descending down to the airport. That's where we're looking at the, the runway environment, setting up to land. But it's, it's, like I said, we travel pretty fast at a hundred and twenty miles an hour or a hundred and fifty. So, twenty to thirty seconds will eat up, you know, one mile. And that goes pretty quick when you're already starting to prepare for landing, slowing the airplane down, getting set up with flaps or landing gear, making radio calls. Any congestion in that, that area around there just really is difficult to deal with when you have other, other items that are going on.
And then just, this is a side question, but I know the, on those wind turbines, the generator part and the cell-
Mm-hmm.
Is where the blinking light is.
Correct.
But then the blade is like another hundred and fifty, two hundred feet above that.
Yeah, it can be generally about a hundred and twenty feet.
Does that ever cause any issues with visual, kind of knowing where the obstacle is versus-
The, not necessarily. What, what the light does is it just brings your attention to that, to that obstacle. Generally, it marks the highest point, but on a wind turbine, they cannot do that. So, there's been some concessions made to, to, because they can only put the light on top of the turbine assembly, just like you said. So, unless a person knows that that's a wind turbine and not a tele or a TV tower or a radio tower, there is still, you know, a hundred, a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet of unmarked obstacle, you know, above that area.
Chris? Remind me what it was in less than a year ago, we approved something to do with flight paths into the airport.
That would be our flight zone that we pass so we could protect our instrumentation of the airport.
And who rated it?
It's in our comprehensive plan.
Right, but we forced to make some change. I mean, we made changes for a reason. Is that FFA?
No, I, I can shed some light on that. The Nebraska legislature for the last couple, two years have been working on some unified zoning regulations for airports. Most airports, if they did not have a county zoning board, did not have specific zoning regulations. So, the state of Nebraska was proactive in trying to get a unified zoning for all airports of certain sizes to prevent problems from, from happening. One of the reasons for this was, I'm in the town of Sidney, Nebraska. There are several wind turbines that were built just south of the airport that greatly affected the airport. But those towers were built in the state of Colorado. So, they're outside the state of Nebraska, but they affect the airport in Nebraska. Some airports have obstacle clearance problems because a obstacle is built in a, in a county that is not where the airport's located. Like I said, our instrument approaches generally start about nine miles away from the, the runway. So, in Gage County or another county, if, if the airport is close to the, to the county line, that local county zoning regulations may not prohibit a, an obstacle from being built in the neighboring county that affects the airport. So, that's why the state of Nebraska increased or made some unified zoning regulations for all airports.
What we passed basically is ten miles in, ten miles out.
Yeah, I remember something.
And they would have to get clearance from the FAA to build a tower.
So, this FFA or FAA determination piece and you not being the sponsor, and is the city considered sponsoring? Matt, did you want to just do?
Only BlueStem Energy has that information.
Yeah. Matt, would you want to approach the city name and address for-
Sure. Good evening, Councilman. Matt Robinette, project manager, BlueStem Energy Solutions. Working on the project with the city, the renewable energy development west of town. So, I've also been in contact with Greg Whistler. When we first started through the zoning process or on this development with the city, he was one of the first people we contacted just to, to let him be aware of the potential development with the city. And I've probably talked to him on three or four different occasions. So, have been in contact with him and have shared all the information that he's asked for and any information that I have. It is not our goal as the developer of this renewable energy project to negatively impact any part of the city of Seward as well as the airport, right? And so, if the FAA would deem that this site is going to either impact the airport through a physical obstruction or derate the navigational portion of, of the airport, we wouldn't develop this site at that location. And the FAA determination or the FAA study that is in process, in the process or in the works, will determine that, okay? And so, at the last council meeting, I guess, that you guys approved the PPA vote, I said it was a major milestone to the project. There's still a lot of work to be done, right? And so, we've done since then, we've done some environmental field, field work and we're working to get environmental approvals. We submitted the K four fifty to NPPD to get their interconnection analysis done. Once we get that back, then we'll have to draft the general interconnection agreement with the city, which is a technical document that will have to get drafted. And we're still working through the FAA study process. And so, this is still a very active development and there's a lot of things, activities going on behind the scenes. And so, it's, this is still a very active development and there's a lot of things, uh, activities going on behind the scenes. Um, and so again, uh, one of the first things we look at when we're developing a project is the local airport zoning. Um, and like, like was just, uh, Greg had just mentioned in some of the conversation, um, local municipal airports in the state of Nebraska have a three mile transitional zone around the airport that we have to stay out of. And they have a ten mile approach cone off of the end of each runway that we have to stay out of. We're outside of those zoning jurisdictions or those zoning areas. Um, and so, back in January, uh, we submitted our seventy-four sixty dash one, um, permit to the FAA, which basically starts the study process with the FAA. Uh, they came back to us on, I believe, March fourth, basically stating that this study was gonna take further study. So they, they couldn't give us a determination yet. Um, and they're still in the process of that further study. I reached back out to, um, our, uh, the technician, uh, at Kansas City in charge of our study, uh, two weeks ago maybe now, and, uh, he said that they, they're, uh, still studying the navigational effects or some radar effects, um, of this site, uh, and the studies are still in, in the process. So, uh, that's where we're at. Uh, so, um, if they deem that it, it takes further study after this, they would then circularize, uh, the information to all, uh, entities, um, involved. So then, uh, Seward Airport would be notified, um, any, any, um, businesses that operate out of that airport would be notified. The Nebraska Department of Aeronautics would be notified. And then they would have their opportunity, uh, to comment on this study. And then all those comments would be taken into review, uh, in the final determination. So, uh, I completely understand Mr. Whistler's, uh, uh, concerns. Again, as a developer, we're not trying to negatively impact, um, the, the airport by any means. Um, but the FAA study is, is still in process, so, um, I guess that's where, where we're at in that, in that part of the calendar.
Chris?
Yeah, um, one thing that, that, uh, Matt did mention is the circularization for public comment. That does not happen on all projects. And we don't know if that would happen with this. So we may not have a chance to discuss this with the FAA, if they determine that it's, that it does not go for circularization.
Do you know if you have one, one tower planned?
Uh, so when we submitted this original study, uh, to the FAA, we actually, because we have the land on the lease, we submitted two sites, two locations on that parcel. Uh, because the study, the study process is, is a very long lead, I think it takes so long to study, um, we submitted, um, two different coordinates on the same location. Um, number one, uh, for this turbine. Number two, um, we have a current development with Seward Public Power. And, uh, at that time, we didn't know, there, we didn't have load analysis on their system yet. And so just to start the process, we did submit a separate, a second coordinate on that parcel. Um, we're far enough in our development of Seward Public Power now to know that they don't have enough load in that location. And so that second coordinate, uh, study won't go by the way, so it's no longer valid, so.
So you won't build a second tower in, in that area?
Nope. And, and I guess to address Greg's concern too about more turbines being erected in that location. Because of our distributed generation model, uh, we're, we're working within the loads of the city, tying directly into their system and a hundred percent of the electricity is used right here locally by the city. Uh, and because of contractual limitations with NPPD, uh, that the city is under, this project would never grow, um, to more than a single turbine.
Assume that would.
I mean, unless, unless you'd have extreme load growth in your contract with NPPD.
Arguably, it's twenty-five year contract, right? It's arguably, I wouldn't say forever, but at least.
Yeah, so I'm, thank you.
Yeah.
Aside from the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped her, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. A quick question, aside from the two that you just mentioned, are there any other alternative sites that you, have you identified at all or looked at or considered that would not be the?
No.
So her question was kind of mine. If you get denied.
No.
Yeah.
If they say no, then?
It's all part of the development process.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd have to go back to square one, um, and try to, try to negotiate a land lease with another landlord and start the process over. Okay.
When I first spoke with Matt, uh, back in March, April and May of last year, he said that they did not want to go further west because that was more cost to them for the, for the bearing of the wire. So, it's, it's a cost issue for their, their part, but. It would, it would be, um, protective of the airport, moving a little bit more to the west.
John, did you?
Yeah, I got a couple. So, if they go off of this study, they're, they're put in for a permit, I'm assuming through the FAA. So if it does not pass, the permit gets declined, correct?
No, there is no.
Ask the gentleman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's, it's a determination of no hazard is what they issue. And so, uh, they'll do this study and then they'll either issue a notice of presumed hazard, which basically says you can't instruct at this location, or they'll issue you a st, uh, determination of no hazard, which gives you the right to go ahead and, uh, and, and direct there, uh, at, at the proposed location.
So then the other question is, because he said that's the only obstacle that would be, and we have a tower out at missile base now that's three hundred feet for our nine-one-one, what does FAA say, talk, or, have you checked into that? Is there any restrictions on that or any concerns? Cause that's right, you're gonna be writing a flight plan or a flight zone of this new tower? So.
I can address some of that. Three hundred feet is considerably shorter than, than four hundred and thirty-four, is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and you're gonna be considerably further north then. So by, by moving further north and a, and a to, a shorter tower, that decreases the slope. So that's, that's not a problem. It's just the closer you get, the higher you get, the, the slope is considerably, um, it's infringed upon.
And then, the other question then would be, growing up here too, that, you know, you've never seen anybody landing from the east or to the west. You know, you ever, you see everybody going either north or south. So, and, you know, you're gonna be four miles away, you won't be in the path when you land.
Not necessarily landing, but in the traffic pattern. Our runways run the, uh, from one six zero to three hundred and forty degrees for our primary, uh, concrete runway. And our grass runway is zero four two two, so zero four zero degrees to twenty-two, two hundred and twenty degrees, which is southwest to northeast. That one has, um, in the airport layout plan eventually, could be paved with an instrument approach, but not at this time. But the instrument approach basically uses a widening funnel that comes down towards the airport. But as it approaches, it also gets lower. But we also have a, an NDB, non-directional beacon approach, which is a circling approach, which once we come down to a certain altitude at a certain time, we physically circle the airport so that we can physically see the runway. We can't land until we physically see the runway. So we physically circle the airport. So we are not necessarily directly in line with the runway. Uh, we tend to land and take off into the wind. The wind helps us take off and land, decreases our takeoff speed and our landing speed. We get the benefit of whatever the five pin, twenty mile an hour wind is. When the airports are built, there's a, a major wind study and our, our predominant winds are out of northwest to southeast. Uh, at least they were back in nineteen seventy-three, seventy-four when the airport was built. Um, also, the FAA does not issue any permits or prevent somebody from building anything. They only make a determination. They cannot stop somebody from building a tower. They only have the ability to not issue a transmitting license through the FCC. So the FAA cannot stop someone from building something.
But the city would have to finally say, well, you know, Blue Stem, so even if they came back and they said that, um, you can still build this, but maybe it affects the instrumentation all, uh, issues you raised earlier. Um, I don't, I get the impression from Blue Stem that they wouldn't wanna impact the airport anyway and neither would, would be our recommendation. So.
Right.
Even if the FAA did not prevent this, you would still have the ability to stop this at some point. And then they'll be up to Blue Stem to decide if they wanted to try to find a new location or not do the project. Is that fair?
That's the difference, yeah.
Yes, Ed?
Um, that, that answer. Bad answer by a coincidence.
Okay.
Since it's out of our jurisdiction, then wouldn't it be the county that can prevent it? We could just say, we're not gonna buy the power, right?
Correct.
No. We, we signed a power purchase agreement.
Right, but as far as like stopping it from being built, it's, it's out, it's out of our two mile.
Well.
Jurisdiction, right? So wouldn't it be the county that, that would have?
The county could stop it, they could say it doesn't meet their zoning criteria. That's what they could do. Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, and it, it's a conditional use permit, so even if it does meet their zoning criteria, they could still not, not give it so.
Right, okay. Thanks for that. But what we've signed is we've signed a power purchase agreement that says if the project gets done, if the, the turbine gets built, then we'll buy the power out of it. But it also says that they, you know, the project has to get done, so there's all these other things that have to get done before the, the project can get completed. So, basically, the only thing, like Matt said, it's a milestone, it's saying, okay, if you build it, we'll buy. And that's, that's as far as we've gotten. There's still, like he said, the general interconnect agreement, which is the big one, that's saying that you can connect into our system. Because it's still our system and so at any time, we could say, yeah, you're not gonna connect to our system. So, you know, there is a lot of things still to go through. And, and I've said all along, and I know the mayor has too, that, you know, you cannot impact the airport. And so if the FAA determines that there is an impact, even if they, you know, if they can't, if they say, we aren't gonna stop it, but if there's an impact, then we're, then the project's gonna stop, at least in, in our, so.
And we've communicated that with Blue Stem very openly.
Many, many times.
So there's no, no, no surprises that this is a concern of ours.
And that determination would only be on an instrument approach though.
Okay.
It would not affect, they do not make a determination based on VFR flying, so.
They, they do. They study all aspects of aviation, one hundred percent, all aspects.
Well, we'll see what the report says when he gets back. And we'll let you know what it says.
Any other questions?
Seeing other questions? Appreciate your time coming down today.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
And we, we just feel it's important to protect the assets that we have in place.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item, item number six. This was, uh, this was a request from, uh, Councilmember Beck for an update on the golf course memberships and operations. Uh, and we have golf course employees here to help answer questions. Bruce, do you wanna take that?
Yeah, well, just to, to start in your packet, it kind of shows the difference between the yearly memberships compared to last year. Um, they didn't have a single membership last year, we do this year. Um, didn't have the youth, so it was just hard to separate what they had. But basically, they had a hundred and sixty-three members and this year, counting the grade school, high school, all those ages, and we split it out, we're at a hundred and eighty-two, so we're up about twenty. And then it, we put in the revenues and expense report and since we bought it after the budget started, remember, we put in two fifty in revenue and I think three hundred in expenses. So, um, this is through, um, May. So we feel like we're in pretty good shape on this. And Drew has some numbers he can tell you about, like green fees last year compared to this year and amount of play. But this just gives you an idea, I mean, right now, we're making money, but, you know, we collected the majority of the money upfront and now, you know, the majority of the expenses are kind of the backend. So, but, uh, but as far as the memberships being up, they are. As far as the, you know, the money, we're still okay, but, you know, we'll probably turn around and especially with some of the other things we've got going on that we'll talk about here in a minute, but.
And total plays.
Well, then Drew's gonna talk about how much, you know, the play and different things like that, so.
Um, just gonna let you guys know a little bit about, um, how this year's gone so far. A lot of the people that have been members previous and are continuing to be season pass holders this year have said that the transition couldn't have gone any smoother than it did. And, um, also have said that their only complaint that they would have is that there's just too much play and they have to call out to get a tee timeout as opposed to just coming out whenever they want, so. That's a good thing. Um, two thousand and fifteen, through May, we had sixty-three hundred dollars in green fees. This year we have ninety-five hundred, um, at this point. And our green fees went down this year. We brought the prices down to become more comparable with, um, all the other nine, all courses around this area. Um, cart fees are up from twenty-eight hundred to thirty-five hundred. Same thing with those, our prices went down. And so we're getting a lot more play, which is a great thing. Um, driving range, we're making a lot more money on, last year the driving range, the course didn't make any money on that. Um, so.
That was owned by the, the Pro got, uh, it's got a west side.
So, um, six hundred dollars was our cost to get rainfalls, um, buckets, everything like that. And we paid for that and we almost doubled that, so we're really good there. And that season pass, we're just about the same as we were last year. We're ahead of it by a little bit, but, um, like Bruce said, we didn't have a single, uh, season pass last year. This year we do. Last year they were paying eight hundred, if you're a single, you get four kids and a wife, pay the same price. This year you're paying six hundred. So, I think that things are going really good. And I think we're gonna continue to get better, get better, so.
Just anecdotally, like what are you seeing as far as, like, for, especially for the greens? For, for those coming in non-season pass holders, are you seeing people from outside the community that are?
Um, yeah, I'm seeing a lot of people, um, from all over, all age groups too. Um, I think the most important thing is just to get them out there. And once they do get there, maybe you can see how nice the courses are, they're gonna keep coming back. Yeah, we've got a lot of kids, a lot of families, um, a lot of people from out of town, Milford, Friend, Omaha, Lincoln. Like I said, if we can get those guys from Lincoln to come out and play, once, they're gonna come back. It's great course.
And we are trying to capture zip, zip codes.
Yeah, we're getting zip codes from everybody that serves.
So that's, in theory, we could track, kind of get an idea, I don't know, like on the mapping software, perhaps, to get an idea of where all these people are coming in from. And I think, like, I was there, I stopped in one day and there's a baseball, is there a baseball, little kid's baseball tournament or something going on?
There was, and then a lot of them came through and.
Like, you, you think he had like an hour and a half between his kids' games?
Yeah, oh yeah, there was a guy, he was, uh, waiting for his son to get done with a baseball practice or a game or something. He came over and played. We get a lot of that, you know, people just passing through, seeing family, stuff like that, like golf.
But you just see a lot more people, a lot.
A lot of new faces. I've been out there for two years prior to this and two seasons prior to this. And you see a lot of the same faces over and over again. But this year it's just a lot of people I've never seen before. And I'm sure a lot of that has to do with the city, uh, taking over the course and letting people know that, that it is open to everybody. So, um, yeah, it's been really good, I think. That'll keep, that'll keep happening more and more as people find out that it's, it is open to the public. You can play there, anybody can play, so.
Ellen, did you have any other questions?
Um, no, I, I, well, thank you for all of your hard work and Bruce's hard work and the staff. Sounds great, we're after a great start.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Dan, do you wanna say a few words about?
Looking course condition or anything as far as?
If you're, if you're happy.
So far, I've been I've heard of the positive.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Go, yeah, go on now. Get high in the bag, get all dressed up.
It is a class.
Yeah. I'm Dan Taylor, I'm the superintendent of grounds on a golf course. And, uh, I've been out there for ten years and just like Drew said, there has been a lot of new faces out there. It's, uh, been a big, big change for, for the better. And as he, he mentioned, a lot of younger faces too, which is great to see too, you know, it's the future of golf, so. Yeah, I think, uh, that's definitely been a positive change, so, absolutely.
The course is in great shape, Dan does a wonderful job. Drew's done a great job in, in the golf shop, putting the leagues together and tournaments and everything like that. The biggest thing that we hear about are the roughs get mowed, you know, I think the roughs got out of hand and you'd be spending half your time searching for balls. And so they got a new rough mower that, from the parks department that we weren't using, but it's bigger. So we can, they can mow twice as much in the same amount of time, is that about right?
Yes, access to equipment has been very nice.
Good. Any questions for, for Dan? We appreciate all, both of you, we appreciate all your work and, you know, it, it does, I know it takes a lot of work. And so we do, we do appreciate what you're doing out there. And I, I, it is nice driving down the highway and seeing carts out there on the course and people, you know, using it and having a good time, so. Thanks.
You bet.
Well, the ones, the one comment that I've gotten by lots of people, and you'll never, ever hear it, is the best thing that ever happened was the city took it over. You'll never hear, the best thing that happened is government took something over, so.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Are you good, Ellen?
I'm great, thank you.
All right, um, next item number seven. Uh, consideration of water well repairs replacement at Surry Community Golf Course. Bruce?
Well, we, uh, we did a pump test on that well at the golf.
Well, we uh we did a pump test on that well at the golf course this spring. By Sargent, they they tested it and tested it forty percent, forty-two percent, which is way low. And it was fine in the springtime because we had a lot of moisture and rain and stuff. And uh but now that it's getting hot, and Dan, you know, you can come up and talk about this, but what we've got is, you know, he's running that pump now twelve hours a day instead of six hours a day because it's pumping half day of water, so we're using a lot of energy. But why don't you kind of talk a little bit more about it?
Well, uh currently, we're only running at three hundred and sixty gallons a minute. And one sprinkler head runs forty-five gallons a minute, so that's eight sprinkler heads that we can run per at a time. It was running at five hundred and forty gallons a minute where we could run twelve heads, so obviously, as he said, we're running, you know, around forty percent or whatever. That increases the window. Obviously, on a golf course, you can't just water whenever you want to in the middle of play. You kind of are limited to to watering at night and then into the early morning and then, you know, play starts and kind of have to shut things down. Golfers don't really care to to uh play golf through sprinklers, so um I guess just that. And we're fine. We're making it work right now, but that water window is so long right now compared to what it should be, as Bruce said. It's it's just, you know, and and I guess until we get that well pulled and know exactly what the problem is, we're going to have to continue to limp long, um running like this. And uh it's just going to take a long time to get things done. It it does, we are able to get that done and accomplished, but it's just taking a lot longer than it than it should. And I'm not exactly sure what the problem is, and until we get that pump pulled, we won't know what that problem is. And I don't know if that problem can reverse and lead to, you know, a bigger problem down the down the road, so. Um given the current weather and the ten day forecast, I wouldn't suggest we necessarily jump anywhere right now. I think we we talked to the the pump company and they said that we'd be down for hopefully a maximum of forty-eight hours. So we're talking about two days and uh if we get a break in the weather, hopefully we can get it accomplished.
So we do have a bid here from Sargent. I think it was what we were looking at, is that right? Chris?
Dan, when was the last time you reworked that well? What was it we did? How long ago that was?
Really, to the well, we haven't done anything. We did put a variable frequency drive on it, um which that's more to do with electrical part of the well than it is to do with the actual running of the well. So uh as far as, you know, maintaining the well itself, since I've been there in ten years, really.
It must have been older than that.
Oh, yeah.
When we made the assessment on the well?
Oh, man, twenty years? I don't know. I mean, when they actually looked at the tube and everything?
Oh, yeah, when it was.
I don't think that's ever been looked at.
So the the proposal from Sargent has a replace everything and a repair only. Is this a whatsoever deeded? Sounding like we're not going to really know what happens, so they pulled.
And that's what we're asking for, is just to give us the approval to do what has to be done. You know, obviously, we want to rebuild it if we can because of savings, but I mean, if the, I don't know what could be wrong, the casing shot, you got a bunch of holes in it or something, I I, you know.
In talking with Tim Richdig at the water department, he felt fairly comfortable that it'd be a repair and not a replacement.
But we just don't have the luxury of waiting too much longer, I think. And that's why we wanted to come to council, so you were aware of the issue, um and we could have direction on how to proceed. I have John first, there's nothing to date.
Oh, well, you gotta expect the worst. You don't.
That's why we brought both, yeah.
You know, when you're quoting this, you know, you can't say repair and fix. You need to say what's replacement. You know, what is the replacement going to be? Because very, you know, you could pull the whole thing, the whole pump, do the new casing and everything. The other thing is, is did we only get a quote from one company?
No, no, but this was the one that we thought was best. Because it's a Sargent well right now. It's Sargent everything, so.
Did we see the others' quotes?
No.
Why not?
Well, you, it's it's fine, but it's, we didn't have to bid it because, you know, it was under thirty thousand, but we got two prices. The other one was from Lane and they're, uh it was basically exactly the same. And we figured since it was a Sargent equipment, that we'd let Sargent do it. That's our recommendation.
Most of your well companies can work on any well, but.
I understand that.
You've got you've got companies that are local here, you know, Ernest, and you've also got, you know, others around here, it's like York, you know, that just be competitive and, you know, and share, you know, and see the, you know, who is, you know, might be surprised. Ernest might give you a better quote too. You don't know.
Sure.
I could speak to that a little bit with the conversations I've had with Tim Richdig and conversations he had with Sargent is that forty-eight hour period where it can be fixed. They were saying that because they have all the parts on hand because they installed the pump and they're Sargent dealers. So I think their their timeframe compared to some of the other ones, I think he felt like they could probably achieve the fix a little bit quicker.
Most of your well works are interchangeable, so I mean, you know, company to company, I understand that. It'd be nice to, you know, stay local too and give the, you know, them the option. That's just my thought on that. I like to keep local.
Yeah, absolutely.
So is it a sure thing that that if they pull and rebuild it, that they will will get more water or more output?
Than it currently is doing, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, Jonathan? And then Alan?
Is that going to be something that we're going to have to do in five years again, or is it something that they feel pretty?
I think they feel pretty secure that it's gonna, you know, maybe there might be some maintenance down the road every five years that we need to do. You know, having a conversation with them about what needs to be done going forward as far as maintaining it. Like we discussed earlier, I don't think anything's been done. I know in the ten years I've been there, I haven't been having that B F D that hasn't been done at other golf courses I've worked at. I know they've had people come out and service their wells on a, you know, three to five year basis, just to make sure everything is working as a ship going forward.
Sure, I'm just, I mean, as as a concern, if you're already halfway there and you think you're going to have to do it in five years, you might as well just replace the whole thing, so.
Alan, do you have?
First of all, I echo John's concern about getting a local bid. Uh I think that's important as well, even if it's under the thirty thousand dollar. However, going forward, are you looking for a motion that allows option one or two depending on the recommendation?
Yeah, we're just asking for the ability to to repair the well or replace everything if necessary. It wasn't budgeted for, but, you know, we'll, it's something that has to be done. So that's why we came.
So he's looking for the authorization to do either depending on what the Sargent, excuse me, I mean, the Sargent company comes back and and says needs to be done. So yeah, John? I mean, I'm all for, you know, going Sargent too, but I just like to see the quotes, you know, from everybody giving us. Now, is there a risk that we'll have to go deeper?
As far as?
The well.
The well? I couldn't, I couldn't.
Because you know, it, you know, it goes after so many, it goes by the foot.
Right.
And it can get real costly.
Right.
You know, I'm just.
Give us some pumps. I've been pumping on my side of the street. I'm still the.
You know, but you but you know, even though to that story, you know, you could have a sump pump here, dig a well, you know, a block away and you won't get watered.
Right.
You know, it's just the process, so I'm I'm just, I have no problems supporting that. It's just that with well, you worst case scenario, you got to figure, and I hope we're quoting for the worst case scenario. Well, I think with the, we have the the two, the two scenarios. And what we'd we'd ask is it basically not to exceed on the higher scen- higher cost scenario. And obviously, if they come back and it's going to be something like we have to go down deeper, we don't know how much deeper. We would have to bring that back uh to the council because that changes the whole scenario on this. But at this time, we would just like, we wanted you to know that one, we would, we, our hope is to pre- is to repair. Hope for the best, expect the worst, but also have a contingency if it can't be repaired. And then the dollar amount is to not to exceed is what we're looking for.
Yes. So do you need some kind of motion?
Yeah, we'll need a motion for what I just said.
I will make that motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So so, okay, I should probably restate that. With the, um so I would like a a motion to uh from the council to approve the, what's the dollar amount?
Well, just say not to exceed thirty thousand, because it's twenty-nine, seven, twenty-one and.
So basically, not to exceed thirty thousand on the well repair or or um replacement. And and if it does exceed, we would have to come back before authorizing that. That's the motion.
Make that motion.
And is that the second? So a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes.
And and would be Sargent?
Yes. Please display the votes. Alright, thanks, guys. Um item number eight, consideration of the resolution for refinancing the note for purchase of land for development of the Sioux Regional Rail Site through a direct borrowing with a bank pursuant to section AP debt two oh one Nebraska revised statute. Kelly, did you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, uh this is a resolution, uh prepared pursuant to state statute to approve the refinancing uh of the existing note that we have in place for the, this is for the Brigham property that we purchased a couple of years ago. So uh this would be extending it out for an additional uh two years on under the same terms. Uh basically, an interest only, interest only note, uh three and uh three point two four percent and then uh interest only and then twenty-four month time period.
Any questions or comments for Kelly? I'll add to this resolution.
Okay, the resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty sixteen dash sixteen. Would anyone like to move it? This resolution being passed and adopted?
One second.
Do the motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Um item number nine, city minister's report.
Um the report's in your packet. Everybody's getting ready for the Fourth of July and things, and we've had some street issues with the heat. They've heaved in a few places, so we've been out fixing those. There's an update um on the second page. Tim went, Tim Richdig from the water department went to a Big Blue N R D grant. We were asking for the, the grant application was actually thirty-seven thousand four and seventy-five dollars. Four new filters for the water treatment plant that were, because it's time to replace those, and they've actually lasted quite a lot longer than what was anticipated, so it's been alright. It was the, it was approved by staff, went to the to their board, and they actually approved that on the sixteenth, so. We got the grant money out. It's it's still going to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, but every little bit helps towards that, so. That's kind of an update on that, so I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions for Bruce? Seeing none, I would like to do a motion to approve or accept the city minister's report.
Sure. Okay.
Do the motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item number ten, huge request for council agenda items or administrative action. Seeing none. Item number eleven, announcement of upcoming events. Obviously, we have the Fourth of July coming up here, um and uh one thing I did talk to Megan about, if you have people asking you about what's going on, if you go to our 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 revamped website where it says official Fourth of July city, that's now a button. So if someone just clicks on that, it takes them to the Fourth of July page. That's a separate website. They're just trying to make it more easy easily accessible for for people. So if someone asks you, what's the agenda, what's going on, they go to that site, click on that big, big button, they should get there. So and there is a lot going, a lot of activities that are are planned, but some of them are are new this year. So any other announcements or events? Seeing none, and item number twelve is a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do the motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.